Hi everyone, welcome back, it's Felix here. I've just come in to do a little update on the grid work I've been doing recently. My most recent trip was to London from the 3rd to the 7th of November. And this was quite an interesting time because so, so, so much was happening with all these train strikes and plans getting cancelled at the last minute and all these real interesting kind of developments that were taking place as well on the world stage. It felt very right to go down around this period. I never really go in with too much of a plan and just kind of hope for the best, blind faith, but holding on to our knowing so that we know that we're being delivered to the right place at the right time. So, this grid work trip, I met up with my friends Veronica Graham and Pratiba, Simon and Amaree came a bit later on. But the first place I was taken to or shown to go, which was on the 4th, Friday the 4th of November, was the Kew Gardens. Now, I do have pictures here that I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring up. And I'm also gonna make a couple of notes as I'm going along, just in case anything develops a little bit further. So yeah, this first place, Kew Gardens, it's like a kind of botanical garden, really big botanical garden actually. Let's get this one up. Where within this place, it kind of like studies all these different plants, it's got palaces within the grounds and holiday homes as well for the 17th century King George and his partner, I believe, Queen Charlotte. There's also a pagoda there as well, which was quite, quite strange, but bearing in mind, this place is absolutely humongous. So like the sheer size of this place, it can take you like a mile and a half to get from one side to the other. And then you've just covered like the southwest part of, of this massive, massive garden. So it is super vast, there's so much going on in there and I just feel we should just jump straight in. So as soon as we arrived to Kew Gardens, parking in the, in the car park. The first thing that happened was as soon as I stepped out of the car park in my mind's eye and overlaid in front of me was a bird that I was seeing. And this bird had the wings of a different bird attached to it and they were sewn on back to front, literally sewn on back to front in this vision. Which stated to me immediately hybridisation. So this was like a key focal point and understanding as to why I was kind of taken here to run this cleanup and kind of shed some light onto this organisation as well. Because when you look at the website, I'll see if I can get the website up. Hopefully you can't see me ordering shoes online. I was designing some shoes on Nike because my other ones are battered now and I felt, why not? Right, so I'm gonna stop sharing the screen and then try and get this up and running. Here we go, okay. Share screen, Kew Gardens. Right, okay, so here we go, future is botanic, it says here. Now, a big shout out to Veronica for this because she's kind of like pushed me in this direction to actually look at this location. But I just find it very, very interesting, the more we kind of dived in to this website prior to and afterwards actually. What was found was these other sites that is used within Kew Gardens that are global actually. And what they do, researching and containment of samples and specimens. But as I really dived in a lot deeper here, what I was discovering was a lot of genetic splicing, a lot of DNA manipulation and essentially hybridisation of flowers which then moved into genetically modified food, it's moved into all of these different kind of anti-life scientific experiments where the coverage of them essentially is looking at how it can help and change and transform the world, but in actual fact, it's pumping genetics, genetically modified chemicals or chemicals and genetically modifying the seeds, genetically modifying all of these different kind of attributes, but what I really, really dived into was the genetic splicing and merging together of interspecies connections. So that was very kind of seedy there and then with that, I'm just gonna go back to the picture frames here. So yeah, that was the first thing that I saw when I got to this place was this bird with the wings of a different kind of bird, I think it was like a pigeon with the wings of a dove, but the, the wings of the dove were sewn on upside down essentially to this pigeon. So yeah, that was all gorgeous, not. As I was kind of stepping into this beautiful, beautiful surrounding, this beautiful buildings, very regal kind of area that has obviously had so much attention brought to it and care put into the, into the, into the grounds, but actually deeply underneath it all, we're finding a lot of hybridisation models and methods. So just to start our journey, we go through these fantastic gates here and we come to this palace where King George, I believe this was King George's summer home, where as he developed later on in life, he became mad, living in this building. And this is the place where he died in the end of the 17th century. So yeah. Now this building, as soon as you kind of got close to it, there was such a void, a void space going on within this location and as I'm looking at it now, what I can see is a black mass spiral running through the centre of this location, almost like an anti-life vortex. That's draining life force and draining draining the energetics within this structure, I feel to do with obviously like this kind of black nobility, this kind of royal family tree, let's say, within this location. This is kind of one point of what was, what was kind of implemented through that and as I'm looking now further, I can see multiple tiers of grid enmeshment and black magic initiated through this location, but there's more. So as we proceed, we're gonna go to the back garden of this place now. And here, behind us in this picture is the, the backside of the palace or the castle, whatever it's called, the palace, I think. Now, here you can see directly in front of us on this sign. I'm gonna see if I can zoom in a little bit here. I don't think I can, yeah, I can zoom in, okay. I'm doing what I'm doing. Okay, so here we've got the statues, this is the lay plan of the garden. Now, these five heads, I felt as soon as I got here and stood there, I was seeing a black mesh grid overlaying through this location like a control enmeshment. And what this was doing was running over the entire of this garden structure. Now here we've got a well, but then beyond that, behind this, we've actually got a statue of a little boy with wings holding what is proclaimed to be a dolphin. And I can sell, I can definitely tell you now, this is not a dolphin. When I was there, actually this looked more like a serpent, it reminded me instantly of Leviathan. Gone too fast. Yeah, so this reminded me instantly of Leviathan, which is when I kind of referred back to this location and we've got these five heads that are all pretty much staring at this child, holding this Leviathan. Now, behind this statue, we have a horned devil, missing one horn, no doubt, but this horn devil and what this thing was doing essentially, I felt it was like a kind of lookout or a, what's the word, like a kind of almost like a pledge to this entity to oversee the whole, the whole palace. And it just got more and more creepy, the more I kind of spent the time in this place, it was just not nice. So as I'm going through this location with the girls and Graham, the lands were giving me very, very strong information of masquerade balls, these anti-life parties with deeply sinister behaviour. And the one thing that really came to mind here was the festival of Lupercalia, which is celebrated by the occult, by the negative. And what I was seeing flamboyantly within this space was I was tuning into the energy of the land, was I was seeing these actions taking place. Now, I'll just see if I can get a quick description of Lupercalia, just to kind of Lupercalia, I don't know if I can spell it right. Lupercalia, there we go. Right, from what I understood in my research of this, it was well, it's a pagan festival or an occultic festival that's kind of been demonised and kind of flipped and turned by, by the occult. However, what this Lupercalia festival was about was essentially sexual revels with young men, let's say, below the consenting age. When I've really kind of understood this, what they do is they send them out into the forest and they go and hunt them and then place their sexual organs in places where they should not be placed, especially to a child, absolutely. So this was very much the the feeling that I was getting from the land at this location. I was also feeling and seeing tunnels opening up underneath the palace where there was encagement or aged goods. Basically moving children around, trafficking of children under these locations and it was when we got to this point here, this birdcage, so to speak, this is when I actually saw, as I looked in here, a full-on birdcage with little birds flying around within there, trying to escape, trying to get out and it was quite horrific to, to feel. So the more I kind of connect into this location and really feel into it, it's like it was definitely a site for, for this trafficking and movement of, of young ones. So essentially as I was kind of standing here and watching, I saw a stream of pink, like a pink cylinder of light coming down and entering into the centre point of this location. And within this centre point, this is when I saw the lift and release of all of this really, really heavy stagnant grey heaviness within, within the fields, within this underground location. It was very sad and quite painful to bear witness to. But I guess the more we kind of progressed in this place, the more sinister it really got. Because yeah, it's very superficially, it's gorgeous, it's really nice, but in actuality, there were some very, very dark things within this, within this vicinity. So as I'm seeing this light coming in, I can see it pass through the earth foundations and then also connecting into these tunnels like the only way I can describe it would be like the breaking of a dam, let's say. No, the breaking of the dam allowed that flow of frequency to really pass through and move through these tunnels through London. Now I'll get to something quite interesting later on when we head into town, but just for now with this location, it's, I found it quite quite wonderful to see and also even better to feel, feeling all of this really heaviness, this real heaviness alchemise in that moment as I bear witness to the tunnels filling with pink light, pink liquid light, cleansing and purifying as the element of water. So as this kind of continued and progressed, we come back into the back garden and what I was seeing was all of the lands beginning to flood and that great grid mesh pattern that was overlaid this location and connecting into all of these beings, the five heads, the well and the little child with the Leviathan. I could see and feel the dissolve occurring as I bear witness to this and the interaction with the sun. The sun came in and illuminated the grounds and the lands lifting out the anti-life, destruction, sheer terror, that feeling you get when you watch something really scary and it's like feeding on that fear excitement, if you watch like a really scary movie, I try not to watch them these days now. But you get that kind of feeding frenzy on the loosh, I suppose, that you provide in your own body, but within this kind of scene where I'm seeing all the Lupercalia, seeing all of like the, and feeling the adrenal, the adrenals becoming worked up and manipulated and then feeling the terror that was actually embedded within the land, this was everything that was coming up and clearing through this location and as I bear witness to see this, what I could see was seeds of new life being sown into the ground and fresh flowers opening and blooming. So what we have there is a complete calibration and germination of these blissful seeds from source to grow into full abundance and really churn, I think the word's mulch, the soil, when you, when you turn the soil and makes it nice and fresh, ready to, to plant these new flowers in the land, that's what it really felt like and I've just gone all goosebumpy here as I'm talking about this, there's my, there's my validation and it just feels so good. The farther we went in and did the clear up, the more of these experiences were, were occurring. So that was, that was really wonderful to, to bear witness to and to experience. Now, what I thought was really interesting as well, this building had a, what looks like a lift that had been attached to the building on the side. So why would a 17, well however old this building is, why would this need a lift put into it and why was it kind of documented into there and how deep did it really go? These are the kind of questions that I was thinking and remin, and kind of reminiscing, reminiscing, whatever the word is, I was thinking about them. As we were kind of working through these lands and really touching base with what the purpose was for this. So yeah, that was, it was quite interesting here and then as we came out of this location, Pratiba, these are her lovely feet and her back, we found this heart-shaped puddle filled with water, which was really nice. Now, interesting, okay, right, I'm just trying to find all of my other pictures as well because there are more. This again, here with these cone shapes, so this is on the way to the next place, the Orangery, I think we went to, we stopped there for lunch. There were these pyramid shapes all the way down this pathway. And it just did not stop all the way down and the further we went in, the more electronic or electrical the current felt, but it felt manipulated. So that was, that was really weird as we were kind of going down there. Where there are other things as well, I'd just like to kind of, there we go. Right, I'm gonna stop sharing. Come into these next pictures. Okay. Right, so as we went through this location and down this big pathway, I was feeling all of this really heavy static running through my head. I found it very weird that the pyramid plants were actually more blackened rather than green as well, which I thought that was just really weird. God, my head's just hurting now thinking about that. That's really strange. Okay, so what I'm getting images of here is Alice in Wonderland, I'm getting images of the checkable mutations. And the white rabbit with the stopwatch running as if it was late. It feels as though almost like a kind of like an initiation into a fairy tale, so to speak, as if there was some kind of subliminal trigger point, I would say, of these pyramid plants that would initiate a kind of mind control orientation through, I've just seen a 444 as well, as I'm saying that, so we're gonna go with that. Yeah, so what I was seeing, yeah, it feels like a kind of mind control initiation through subliminal programming as we walked through that, as I walked through that location, but this place led us to the next place, which was this huge glass house structural composite, which actually there were many different plants within this place, it's like a, go to the botanical gardens and you go in the hot room that smells really good. But it has all the tropical plants in it, so it's really humid. Now I thought this place was really interesting, this is one of the plants, I don't know what this is called, but I just thought it looked cool. So as I kind of like looked into this place and started looking around, there were tiers within this location. Number one was this downstairs location, which obviously they're gonna need to have if they've got plumbing, they've got all this, that and the other kind of situations or locations, but I also felt that underneath this was more of an extensive tunnel section. Extensive tunneling location that I felt and as I'm seeing now, I'm looking into it now, I can see within these locations as labs that are running more gene splicing experimentation. How far down they go, I've got no idea, but this is just what I can see at the moment as I'm kind of remote viewing at the same time and my back is getting really cold. Which is another symbol for validation. So all of these different parts are linking up to number one, play the the naughty scientists of Atlantis kind of programmes, this wounding and trajectories. Now, as this is filtering out, I feel like this location is actually quite a hub location for like the, the, let's say the top people in their fields here. So yeah, that was, that was all very interesting to me and I'd like to take a bit of a deeper dive within this because I feel there are also a couple of false greens that are kind of blocking Blocking. Um extra bits of information that I think we can get, so I will, um. I'm gonna just make a note of that. Uh I will be going back in, I will be remoting back into this um place just to really. Give it another once over or twice over. However many times over it needs, uh until it's running a lot more smoothly, um. But predominantly, as I'm looking to this now, I can actually see the whole grids opening up and I can see this going into different locations through China. Through um. Through Africa. I wanna say through locations in South America as well, I feel. Yeah, I can see South America lighting up with um as if the map had little red. Uh beacons of light uh emitting but artificial ones. And I'm just getting quite a bit of pain through the right side of my head as I'm looking to this as well. So you know, these uh this is all feeling very accurate, um. And what I can now see coming in. To this domain is a pillar of golden light, which is extending out like a lightning bolt. Going into um these other locations upon the map and really building into these. Grid locations. Particularly through the Atlantic Ocean, um. So yeah, but as this is coming in, it also feels like it's kind of lifting as well. Very interesting, uh there, there's also a templar, um like an inorganic, not an inorganic, but like a. An artificial templar that's overlaying to this as well, um. It's really hurting my eyes, um. So as I kind of like tune in and look into this now, it's like this uh. Templar, artificial templar implant. Feels to be one level of a seal, if you will, or um. Yeah, like a seal kind of implementing through these locations and as this is coming up and coming out, I'm feeling really nauseous as well. And I'm feeling this through the entire left side body. Particularly through the heart and the throat and it feels like I'm, I've, I've literally feel like I could hurl right now. So we're just gonna command and extract. And dissolve. Okay. So as I'm looking to this now, what I'm seeing is like a lighting system coming forwards, uh like a Victorian lamp. Um that you would see outside, um. And within this diamond shaped lamp, so to speak, has got a big flame. Um within it. And it's like I can see all the con- the constructs of this. Diamond with the flame um and the pole, but. It feels more like it was encaged, so now the diamond I'm seeing it fall. And the flame leave this um artificial engagement. Okay, interesting, so what I can hear with this now. Is that this engagement of the flame and an artificial diamond is linking into the hybridization wounds to prevent um. To prevent levels of planetary ascension from coming online. Um but as this flame. Begins to step out of this location, what I'm seeing is that it's burning into these grid locations. And as, oh my god. As it's starting to open in these locations, what I can see is the um. The grid lines where. This hybridization plantation, um movements coming for, oh my god. Uh movements coming forwards here, I'm seeing the um flame expand through the grid locations. And really extend to these uh. Different locations on the, on, on the world map and what it's doing essentially, I can see it's um. Digging into these, is burning up these artificial um. Root manipulations that are anchoring into the inner earth. Grid networks and my other will you rest now, she got. And running a dissolution, um. To this network of location, I am last multiple here. I'm also seeing my own body or the collective body, I'm feeling it very much so in my own body, but a collective um overlay here. To this map and I'm seeing this golden flame um burning through the body as well. This is also picking up a lot of stomach issues as well here, I feel, um. Which to me would make sense if it was working into GMO foods and. Really um. Creating so many uh heavy metal. Processes into this um kind of. Hmm network, I suppose, I know what I'm trying to say, I'm just feeling a lot of things at the moment, um so please bear with me. Um. Almost like the um, the flame going in to this location, um. And through the bodies is burning the. Like the implementation of um. AI parasite networks through the bio tissues, through the bio field. And through the organs uh of the body, Maya. And now all of a sudden, well not all of a sudden. As this graduates, my body is getting um almost like the, the feelings of fever. Um so hot in some areas and really cold in other areas, um as. As it's starting to regulate itself now. Um I'm seeing and feeling vortexes coming through the center core of the body and expanding up through. From the feet up through to the uh crown. And extending further as well, actually, am I, I thought it's not, yeah. And really feeling a lot of um. Release through the left side temple and the left side eye. I feel the more that I'm going into this, the more it's kind of programmed with an agenda, um well, obviously, but. Programmed with an agenda, uh. Disrupting the ability to um focus, uh to. My god. Essentially completely, um. It's running multiple electrical currents through my body that just don't feel organic, um. As I'm tuning into this and my liver feels very painful as well, it's like a complete um. Detoxifying, oh no, not detox, a toxifying or a high levels of toxicity, I don't even know whether that was a word before. Um but we'll go with it. Okay, so this is kind of what I'm seeing and feeling through this location as I'm really remoting in. I'm starting to see the breakdown, so um whilst we're here, uh is there anything else? We can really work into to dissolving through this place and what I'm seeing is a huge blue. River uh or wave coming through from the west, um. And running through these laboratories. That was really weird. Okay, sorry, I was like, what was going on? I just heard this really beautiful ethereal music come on and then I forgot that I was actually listening to someone, I was gonna be listening to someone's um. Video at five P M, uh so um. Yeah, okay, so I'm seeing that comes through and washing and cleaning. Uh this location, I'm seeing all of this black goo, I'm seeing all of this uh. Heavy um black grey. Uh energy overlaying um. And lifting up with the water and as it interacts with the water, I'm seeing it disintegrate now. And I'm also seeing really beautiful magenta diamonds. Coming in to connect into the water. Running uh scalar waves of magenta light up. Through center, may I call this most multiple year. As it's really running purification, I'm Maya. And what I can see coming from the foundation levels of this now as well is um. Really expansive light, almost like presenting as Saturn. But this really bright expansive light is coming through uh the center of the planet and into the rings. Dissolving and expanding out the rings, um. And it just feels so good. Very expansive. As it connects over the lands. And indeed, over the earth and into these uh. Grid manipulations, am I, I call this, so I'm the more I did, well, yeah. Um, okay, so let's move on, actually intended to do. One video for about an hour on all these locations today, um but apparently this is just not gonna happen. Um so. This next location in Kew Gardens. Um. We went through some really nice places as well, actually, so lots of lovely trees, um. As we moved away from that big, big glass house building, um. Finding these lovely trees and then coming to the pagoda. Which I didn't look into this time, but I will be looking into next time because I feel like there's a whole. Lot of stuff going on there, um. That is yet to be discovered, um. But I'm willing and ready in due time to get this done, um. Okay, so as we move deeper into the woods. Uh we came to um this location, which is Queen Charlotte's Summer House. This was very secluded, lots of really built up trees, um. Essentially hiding this location. Which that in and of itself, obviously, yeah, I understand if you would require security or. Quiet time. Um as a royal, I do understand that, but as we came into this location, all of this grassland, so this grassland. Was maybe about. Hmm. Fifty meters. Uh across the. Uh across, I think it's the radius, is it the radial line, or the one that goes straight through a circle, um. And as soon as we got into this location, I saw a mountain of children, um. Heaped on top of each other with arrows in their backs, um. In this land, it was, it was really sad, um. So again, this was another hunting land, um hidden within the forests. Uh for, for the wealthy, um. Where blood sport was, was the idea of fun. Um, so as we kind of connect into this location. The openings of uh gateways began to appear. Um in gold and pink light. And as they opened, there was also a pillar of gold. Coming down into the center point of the grass, right into the location of where. Um there was a uh where the pile of children were. Essentially, there were some that were burnt as well, it was, it was really sad, um. And when I saw this pillar of light coming down and in, what I saw emerge from it underneath was. A geometry, a floral geometry. Um that that kind of looked a little bit like um a Tibetan flower or something like that. And as I was watching this, um light coming in. On this geometry. Which now as I'm looking at it, I can see it split into five, um. Which runs through the human body in five tiers, but also at the same time. I can see it running through the land and through the tears of the children and as I'm watching it, it's like flashing. Almost akin to a camera at times, like a multi-flash camera, but then other times it would just be occasional, but rhythmic. And as I saw this occurring into the land, I'm seeing the children, the heaviness around them, beginning to de-particularize enough so they can step out of the, of the space where they're taken by the hand by these light beings, these angels with guard spears and golden armour. And moved into the portal gateway to return back to source. And as this is also occurring simultaneously, I'm actually getting pain in my neck as this is happening as well. It's like that deep, deep feeling of loss and grief and tragedy upping and releasing from the land here. What I can see is the landscapes of this grass beginning to reconstruct itself as well, almost like like a healing of the memory fields of the earth and of the the landscapes as well. I can see it kind of like rebuild itself. Into a more harmonized flow. And what I can see sitting through this location now is a huge translucent lotus flower. With tiers on top and each is spinning in different directions. And I feel now more than ever the reconstruction of these grids, of these locations, of the memory fields to come into a state of purification once again. And the more that I look now, it's like I can see the negative entities surrounding this location as well. Making their presence known. So it's like I can see through multiple layers of the holographic fields here where these different beings are coming in from. And what I'm seeing is as they're coming closer towards this petal, which is this flower, which is what they want. They're disintegrating upon impact. They cannot resist this flower, this sacred flower. They can't resist it, but as they come closer to it, they can't survive within that location. So it's like a de-particularization, a dissolving of these frequency bands. So we're gonna expand that flower like this lotus. Three hundred and sixty degrees across the entire Kew Gardens. Right, okay. So that was the palace. I did see these entity, these children leave. And I did see the reconstruction, but obviously there's always more to kind of touch upon and and do. There's only so much you can grasp in an hour at each spot really, or maybe two hours at each spot. And I can now see the grids turning gold. Like an overlaying grid in that, that location as if I was bird's eye view, remoting, or I am, seeing this bird's eye view of this, this building. I can see a grid now turning gold over this and connecting over the, the location. So yeah, and then through the walk back, there were the most fantastic trees. These I forgot what they're called, the redwood trees, I think. Native to America, but they're like the biggest ones, the coastal redwoods. I just love them so much. This is what we're witnessing, the biggest one. Was really rejuvenating to, to this land. So yeah, that essentially was Kew Gardens. I'll just bring up some nice pictures here, like how big these lady pads were. Almost feels like you could just get in them and sit on them, couldn't it? So nice. Yeah, so that was Kew Gardens. What I will do next or in a few days when I can, is move into November 5th. And talk about this location here, which was very significant. And I feel the entire reason of why we were sent there. Obviously, Kew Gardens was very important. I felt like I was being called to go there. But this was the, predominantly the main reason why. So yeah, anyway, thank you guys so much for staying with me for this hour. I think it's an hour. And I will look forward to connecting with you again and talking about the Houses of Parliament. Talking about the London Tower of London as well. Very interesting goings on there. And some really, really great things that were kind of broken down whilst we were there as well. And just again, a big thank you to Graham Veronica Protiba for assisting me on this trip and giving me a place to stay. I really appreciate it. I could not have done this without you guys. Much love. Okay, have a great evening, guys. Lots of love. Bye.